A call to order and it does appear we have a quorum. From my right to my left, we have Ms. Stephanie Wimberly. We have Mr. Victor Torana. We have Vice Chair Ms. Ann Ward. I'm Commissioner and Chair Daniel Boland. Over here to my left, Commissioner Mr. Mike Metz. We have Commissioner Mr. David Abrams and Mr. Johnny Wicker. And we have Commissioner Tamika Means on Zoom. So we do have a quorum. Mr. Abrams, would you mind giving our invocation, please?
Let us pray, please. Our Father in heaven, we thank thee for this day. We thank you for your many, many blessings. And we ask you to continue your blessings as we go from day to day. Bless us, help us to be more loving and understanding. And as we gather here today, give us open hearts, open minds, that we will do the business for the citizens of Newberry County and do what we can to make it a better place. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Abrams, and thank everybody for coming out here tonight. Hope to get everybody out of here at a decent time this evening. I just ask that we all be respectful of one another's time. Please be respectful of speakers when they are speaking and let's do the business of the county. Moving on to our next item, approval of minutes for our March 21st, 2023, should say 2023 meeting. Give everybody a chance to look over those. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read over them prior to tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I was...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Not sure whether... Down where it says approval of minutes of the meeting in these minutes. It says Commissioner Mike Meets made a motion to approve... Oh, sorry, Commissioner. I thought it still had him as the chairman, sorry.
Okay.
Was last week's meeting not at 5:30? It was at 6:00 p.m. We'll make that change.
Yeah. I move we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, we have a motion to move on the minutes as accepted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a second.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Abrams seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, moving on to new business case presentation. Item A, that is MA01-04-18-23, a rezoning request for two real estate parcel totaling 3.92 acres located at 2209 and 2211 Wilson Road, Newberry, South Carolina to be rezoned from general commercial to single-family residential. Tax map numbers 339-3-6-1 and 339-3-6-2. Staff, could you please give us your presentation?
Yes. The owners, Mr. Robert Shealy, Ms. Georgiana Enlow, and Mr. Christopher Shealy, all are asking for their property... There are two properties that are right beside each other there on Wilson Road, 2209 and 2211 Wilson Road, to be rezoned from general commercial to single-family residential. They have a prospective buyer that is looking at this property for residential. With the existing house in general commercial, basically, he has to use it as is. He cannot add a garage or change anything to that home in general commercial. He can leave it as is and live in it as residential, but any changes would not be permitted because it is on general commercial. So he's wanting this as a residential establishment. And so he is asking, the current owners are asking to be rezoned to RSM, Single Family Residential. Based on the current future land use map, it is zoned as economic development and this rezoning does fit into that description.
Is the buyer aware that he can't make any changes?
He is aware. He is aware of that. And with multiple discussions with buyer, realtor, and owners, it has been decided that he does want to do a garage slash maybe workshop, personal use, and to do that, he would, it would need to be rezoned to residential.
Everything's residential, pretty much around there?
So you see behind it in the light yellow, that is all residential. That's actually Newberry, the new subdivision, Newberry Landing. Well, if you're standing on Wilson Road to the left in that green is R2 Rural, but across the road, Pine Lane, Pine Lane Circle, all of that is residential.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming if he's looking to buy in both plots and he buys them, he's gonna...
I can't answer that. He's looking to buy both, but I don't know if he will combine them or not.
So if he doesn't combine them, then he can put a house on both of them, correct?
Yes, he could. He would, that narrow strip's kind of limited of what you could do there, but potentially, he could.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, are the applicants here this evening? Would you like to speak on the matter?
I'm not the applicant, I'm his agent.
Okay, please, ma'am, please state your name and come forward for us, please.
If he would sign in and come to the podium and state your name.
Here, Bridget, you need a pen?
Sorry, this is a little bit more official than I thought it would be. My name is Rita Bowles, R-I-T-A-B-O-W-L-E-S. Do not reverse the E and the L, I will be Rita Bowles. Okay? That said, I'm with Home Advantage Realty and I'm representing the buyer. It is, there has been a house on this property since 1952. We were unaware that it was zoned general commercial until recently, when we made the offer on the property. He does intend to live on the property as the primary owner. He's a diesel mechanic, so he wanted to put a little storage building workshop on the property, which he cannot do as it is currently zoned. But it is his intent to live there. I don't think he has any plans of putting another house on the side of it. So it's just, it's just gonna be him and his little boy. So, but the reason, part of the reason for the request is also his financing is being held up until we can get this matter settled. So, any questions about that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bowles.
Only question I got for staff, what she mentioned he would like to do, is that gonna be permissible?
He cannot, in an RSM, he cannot run a business on that property. I mean, he could have, if it was a hobby or something personal, yes, but he cannot run a business.
I would just want to ask for clarification for him, or so me.
Not a true business.
No, no, he can't run a business.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be, you get this done and then, uh-oh, that's not what I wanted, that was more what I wanted.
Apparently diesel mechanics have an awful lot of tools.
Yes, ma'am.
So, he's got a pretty big shit right now, so that's what he's looking to move in. He's got that and an open window that he keeps zarping after. So, it's not that big of a deal.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on this item? Yes, sir. Please state your name for us.
I'm Christopher Shealy, I'm part of the owners of the property. The reason there was two different parcels listed is one was my mother's and she did it over the 2211 to me and my wife when we moved beside her. Since then, we've moved away. So that's why there's a separation of addresses, but it's all one continuous piece of property, is what we're selling it as. So that he'll have the complete acreage there. So, that's all I wanted to say to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I make motion to rezone.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to rezone and we do have a second. All in favor, we have a, any discussion on that? Okay, we got a first from Mr. Metz, a second from Ms. Wimberly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. And we do have some other business tonight, so you know, you're welcome to stay with us if you'd like to, or y'all are welcome to go. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, our next item of business, moving on to item B, approval of the preliminary plat for the lands and at Woodside Shores subdivision pursuant to subdivision regulations. Staff, can you please give us your presentation?
Yes, so the Woodside Shore subdivision is being done in four phases. Phase one, which is shaded in the pink-red, is Pedlar's Cove and it actually has houses that are already built on some of those lots. The same for what's in blue is Anchor's Way. Some of those have already been completed there. So what they're in is now phase three, which they are naming Lands End. So what we have here tonight is their plat that shows their property lots. The construction drawings, civil engineering drawings, all of those have gone to the county's consultant engineer and he is working with getting all of those approved. 911 has approved, stormwater has approved, and all of the other approving agencies. So tonight, we are just needing planning commission to have, if you have any concerns on the layout or any questions, and then if not, approval.
We have any questions?
Phase four will be done after the phase three is completed out.
So what all, what all does phase three encompass?
Everything that you can see that is not blue or pink.
Okay.
Wetlands, that address?
Yes.
Just for information, we were talking last time, of course, about the population module that we had and there were potential areas in which we thought the population might increase substantially. Do you have any idea when they might think that much of this would be populated?
They, once the preliminary plat and construction drawings are all approved, they can then start with the, putting the infrastructure in. So it's really based on how fast the developer moves with infrastructure and then how fast the lots sell.
But a couple of years or five years, we don't know.
We don't know. Phase, the phase one and two, I mean, they were much smaller phases, but they, they were developed and sold really quickly. So there's just no, I don't know how to answer that with the economy and everything else right now.
Yeah, it just...
Yeah, it's all unknown at this point.
But that's a lot of property with what the people could populate.
What about the proposed, I guess, population? Has that been addressed with all this coming in or what?
It has, for this area, it has, yes, sir. For this area of Newberry, it has, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
From general commercial to single-family residential tax map numbers three, three, nine dash three dash six dash one dash one and three, three, nine dash three dash six dash two. Staff, could you please give us your presentation?
Yes. The owners, Mr. Robert Shealy, Ms. Georgiana Inlow, and Mr. Christopher Shealy, all are asking for their property, their two properties that are right beside each other there on Wilson Road, twenty-two oh-nine and twenty-two eleven, Wilson Road, to be rezoned from general commercial to single-family residential. They have a prospective buyer that is looking at this property for residential. With the existing house in general commercial, basically, he has to use it as is. He cannot add a garage or change anything to that home in general commercial. He can leave it as is and live in it as residential, but any changes would not be permitted because it is on general commercial. So he's wanting this as a residential establishment, and so he is asking, the current owners are asking to be rezoned to RSM, Single Family Residential. Based on the current future land use map, it is zoned as economic development, and this rezoning does fit into that description.
Is the buyer aware that he can't make any changes?
He is aware.
Okay.
He is aware of that, and with multiple discussions with buyer, realtor, and owners, it has been decided that he does want to do a garage slash maybe workshop, personal use, and to do that, he would, it would need to be rezoned to residential.
Everything's residential, pretty much around there?
Um, so you see behind it in the light yellow, that is all residential. That's actually Newberry, the new subdivision, Newberry Landing. Well, if you're standing on Wilson Road to the left in that green is R2 Rural, but across the road, Pine Lane, Pine Lane Circle, all of that is residential.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming if he's looking at buying both plots, when he buys them, he's gonna...
I can't answer that. He's looking to buy both, but I don't know if he will combine them or not.
So if he, if he doesn't combine them, then he can put a house on both of them, correct?
Uh, yes, he could. He, he would, that narrow strip's kind of limited of what you could do there, but potentially he could.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, are the applicants here this evening? Would you like to speak on the matter?
I'm not the applicant, I'm his agent.
Okay, please, ma'am, please state your name and come forward for us, please.
If he would sign in and come to the podium and say your name.
Here, Bridgette, you need a pen?
Sorry, this is a little bit more official than I thought it would be. My name is Rita Bowles, R-I-T-A-B-O-W-L-E-S. Do not reverse the E and the L, I will be Rita Bowles. Okay? That said, I'm with Home Advantage Realty, and I'm representing the buyer. It is, there has been a house on this property since nineteen fifty-two. We were unaware that it was zoned general commercial until recently, when we made the offer on the property. He does intend to live on the property as the primary owner. He's a diesel mechanic, so he wanted to put a little storage building workshop on the property, which he cannot do as it is currently zoned. But it is his intent to live there. I don't think he has any plans of putting another house on the side of it, so it's just, it's just gonna be him and his little boy, so. But the, the reason, part of the reason for the request is also his financing is being held up until we can get this matter settled, so. Any questions about that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowles.
Only question I got for staff, what she mentioned he would like to do, is that gonna be permissible?
He cannot, in an RSM, he cannot run a business on that property. I mean, he could have, if it was a hobby or something personal, yes, but he cannot run a business.
I would just want to ask for clarification for him, or so me.
Not, not a true business.
No, no, he can't run a business.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be, you get this done, and then, uh-oh, that's not what I wanted, that was more what...
Apparently diesel mechanics have an awful lot of tools.
Yes, ma'am.
So, he's got a pretty good show right now, so that's what he's looking to move, and he's got that and open one that he keeps zarping after, so it's not that big of a deal.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on this item? Yes, sir. Please state your name for us.
I'm Christopher Shealy, I'm part of the owners of the property. The reason there was two different parcels listed is one was my mother's, and she did it over the twenty-two eleven to me and my wife when we moved beside her. Since then, we've moved away, so that's why there's a separation of addresses, but it's all one continuous piece of property, is what we're selling it as, so that he'll have the complete acreage there. So that's all I wanted to say to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I make motion to rezon.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to rezon, and we do have a second.
Second.
All in favor, uh, we have a, any discussion on that? Okay, we got a first.
Mike.
From Mr. Metz, second from Ms. Wimberly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So moved. Motion passes.
Okay.
And we do have some other business tonight, so, you know, you're welcome to stay with us if you'd like to, or y'all are welcome to go. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, our next item of business, moving on to item B, approval of the preliminary plat for the Lands End at Woodside Shores subdivision pursuant to subdivision regulations. Staff, can you please give us your presentation?
Yes. So the Woodside Shore subdivision is being done in four phases. Phase one, which is shaded in the pink-red, is Pedlar's Cove, and it actually has houses that are already built on some of those lots. The same for what's in blue is Anchor's Way, some of those have already been completed there. So what they're in is now phase three, which they are naming Lands End. So what we have here tonight is their plat that shows their property lots. The construction drawings, civil engineering drawings, all of those have gone to the county's consultant engineer, and he is working with getting all of those approved. Nine-one-one has approved, stormwater has approved, and all of the other approving agencies. So tonight, we are just needing Planning Commission to have, if you have any concerns on the layout or any questions, and then if not, approval.
We have any questions?
Phase four will be done after the, the phase three is completed out.
So what all, what all does phase three encompass?
Everything that you can see that is not blue or pink.
Okay.
Wetlands, that address?
Yes.
Just for information, we were talking last time, of course, about the population module that we had, and there were potential areas in which we thought the population might increase substantially. Do you have any idea when they might think that much of this would be populated?
They, once the preliminary plat and construction drawings are all approved, they can then start with the, putting the infrastructure in, so it's really based on how fast the developer moves with infrastructure, and then how fast the lots sell.
But a couple of years or five years, we don't know?
We don't know. Phase, the, the phase one and two, I mean, they were much smaller phases, but they, they were developed and sold really quickly. So there's just no, I don't know how to answer that with the economy and everything else right now.
Yeah, it just...
Yeah, it's all unknown at this point.
But that's a lot of property with what the people could populate.
What about the proposed, I guess, population, is that been addressed with all this coming in, or what?
It, it has, for this area, it has, yes, sir.
Huh?
For this area of Newberry, it has, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Okay. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 So moved, motion passes. Okay, moving on to our next item, and this is not on your agendas, but Katie did want me to let you all know that she will be emailing our rules and procedures as far as this commission is concerned, really, I'd say within, what, the next week or so? Please review that over the next month, and we'll vote on some potential changes at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item five, the draft transportation and community facilities element of the comprehensive plan. Hopefully, you've had some time to look over that. Staff, could you please give us your presentation on that?
So this is, this, as we did last month for the prior three elements, so tonight, we're gonna be looking at community facilities and the transportation elements of the comprehensive plan. So as we all heard last month, what is the role in the plan? What is your role? Is to review the elements, provide any edits to myself, discuss any major edits that is needed, and then by the majority vote, the Planning Commission must adopt a resolution recommending the elements to the county council for their adoption. And this is the elements and the planning process and implementation of the comprehensive plan. So community facilities. What is the community facilities element? It provides an inventory and assessment of the available facilities and services of the local government organization, utilities including water and sewer, stormwater and floodplain management, solid waste collection, police, fire, and EMS services, education and libraries, health care, and our recreation. The current, the county currently has nineteen departments with twenty-four full-time and twelve part-time employees, seven county municipalities, city of Newberry, and the towns of Little Mountain, Peak, Pomeria, Prosperity, Silver Street, and Whitmire all make up Newberry County. Joint Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeal serve the county and the towns of Prosperity, Little Mountain, Pomeria, and Peak. Silver Street and town of Whitmire, we are not served because they did not adopt our organs. So this is the map with the public water providers that we all saw a large image last month, and the green is our sewer lines. So this is a map that shows our twelve county collection and recycling centers. City of Newberry, Prosperity, and town of Whitmire provide solid waste collection for their residents. Eleven volunteer fire departments are organized and work together through the county board of rural fire control. More than three hundred volunteer firefighters man eleven fire stations and eight substations located throughout Newberry County. The city of Newberry provides fire service within their corporate limits from two stations, and they have twenty full-time staff and twenty-five volunteers. And color-coded is the county fire districts. Our law enforcement, Newberry County Sheriff's Office employs forty-eight law enforcement officers, thirty-two detention officers, eighteen telecommunications staff, and five civilian employees. Newberry County Sheriff's Office facilities include the headquarters, four substations, and their detention center. Dispatching, including E-nine-one-one, are all provided by the sheriff, and the city is headquartered in the Public Safety Complex, and they employ thirty-two sworn officers and five support staff. Town of Prosperity and town of Whitmire each employ six officers. Health care, EMS provided by Newberry County, they have thirty-six staff with four ambulances and seven volunteer rescue squads. They have a hundred and eighty volunteers, an ambulance and rescue trucks housed at each station, and they have two at Whitmire. Newberry County Memorial Hospital has licensed for ninety acute care beds. They provide a range of services, including the twenty-four-hour emergency room. Newberry County also has a free clinic that provides health care to residents who lack funds or insurance. And then this is our education map. We have twelve schools, seven elementary, two middle, two high schools. Whitmire Community School, which is pre-K through twelve, we have roughly five hundred, five thousand, seven hundred and sixty students, four hundred and forty teachers, three hundred and fifty administrators slash staff, and we have that, in higher education, we have Newberry College and Piedmont Technical College. Recreation, we have nearly fifty-eight thousand acres of Sumter National Forest. Fourteen percent of the county is federally owned and managed. Three hundred and forty-eight acres, Drew Island State Park. We have forty-six public parks and recreation facilities, and four sections of the Palmetto Trail are all housed in Newberry County. Some things we need to consider in this element, are service levels adequate to meet current residence, residential needs? Will our services and facilities be adequate to meet our projected growth? Is there adequate coordination among our service providers and our local government? Do all residents have access to quality, affordable health care and support services? Do our residents throughout the county feel safe? And are there accessible recreational and educational options for residents of all ages and interest? So if you've had time to read through the community facilities element that I provided, do you have any questions, concerns, edits?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Victor?
Page seven-twenty-two, says law enforcement, about three lines from the bottom, it says, Newberry, there were three murders were reported in Newberry County in twenty-twenty, nearly seventy-six percent of property crimes, and five hundred and seventy-three point five percent, which probably is a misprint.
Yep.
That's an awful lot of larceny.
Yes, um, so this information, we all contacted our local law enforcement, and they gave us the, the data, so we will double-check that to, to clarify if there is a typo.
Okay, and one other one on page seven-thirty-four, Newberry College, the first paragraph, it says blah, 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 residential facilities, it served nearly eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty, I think that's probably one thousand, two hundred and fifty students.
You're right, yep.
Got a closer number? What's the closer number?
Alyssa grew a lot since I retired, but...
What is it? What's the number?
Eleven four three.
She can tell you the exact number, sorry. So it's eleven four three.
Okay, we'll get that change made as well. Thank you. Any others?
Katie, the, the fire service, back to the fire service thing, with the development and stuff that's going on, are we thinking about pay, you know, getting some paid people at these stations or what?
I cannot answer that a hundred percent, but I do believe there has been some, some talk about it.
Talk about it?
And if that is something that y'all would like to recommend in this planning element, that is what this, this, that's what this is for. This is a, a document that we as Planning Commission and then county council feels that this is where we need to grow in the next ten years, so if this is, you know, paid fire service is something that y'all think we need, then we need to add it to, to the element.
Yeah, I mean...
You putting in all these hundred, you know, eighty to a hundred houses for subdivision, like that one that's going on, seven seventy-three, I mean, where, where are they coming from? They've got one towards Indisjolly Street, they, it's right off of two nineteen, but it's all volunteer.
Yeah, Little Mountain.
Where are they gonna go?
Yeah, Little Mountain's gonna respond to that.
Yeah, and I mean, that's too far. Like, that really is just way too far, they're next to eighty-two right there, I mean, and I guess my question, not only with the fire service, but I think we talked on this, and there are talks of another elementary school, they've got two seniors in McCarroll, I mean, they're talking at a hundred-plus kids just at that one neighborhood. Where, what do, we've got to figure something out with our school systems, they would never hold.
So we can, that can be put in the element, too, that studies need to be done on the proposed development versus what our schools are.
High school closer to the, to the lake, further, you know, somewhere, we, we need another high school somewhere. That's just my opinion, but...
Okay, any others? Those are great.
We, we do.
Yeah.
I certainly like the idea of paid, you know, fire.
Price tag, that's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
Price tag, that's...
That's gonna be a thing, where, where's that? But that, that's a huge cost. I mean, you definitely have to increase, you definitely have to increase the number of volunteers that you had.
But every time one of these subdivisions come in, they're like, oh, your counties don't get your money, so it is a huge cost, but they keep promising us, promising us, you know, that the county's getting all the money on these houses and their tax write-offs, and, you know...
Well, it will, it will increase the tax base, that's true.
So if we're increasing the tax base, I mean, that's...
We just need to look at the rate of growth.
We do, the rate of growth, and those should be things to be considered.
And this is where y'all could recommend an impact fee be applied to developments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of that.
Absolutely.
I guess one of the biggest things, this is just from personal experience, that, that worries me about the taxes, they tell you, oh, you're gonna get all these, you have property taxes, but what they're not talking about is who are coming in, and one of the things I've noticed in Newberry County, and I'm just gonna tell you, I'm one of them, and I'm at fault for it, is we have a lot of middle-aged, still considered young veterans who are retired, and the state of South Carolina has a law that if you're a hundred percent disabled, your property taxes are zero on your first five acres in your home. I own sixteen point eight-eight acres with a over half million dollar house on it, and what I pay the county every year, because of my husband's, you know, disability from the military, is less than a hundred dollars a year. So they can tell us if we sell it, but maybe we also need to look at the population that's coming in to see if that's, because I've noticed there are more veterans coming into our county. I know five of them alone that have never lived in South Carolina and are looking at coming to Newberry County in the next four years when they retire. Not that that's a bad thing they're here, they're still gonna go to work, they're still gonna, you know, do constructive things in our community, but if we have a large influx of that, are we really getting the tax dollars we think we are? Does that make sense? So I don't know if there's a way to do a study on, even outside of this, what populations really coming in.
Well, and ultimately, we have to rely on what census data we have for that and going forward, and that's somewhat unreliable.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Do we have any other suggestions? Any other discussion on this?
Does anyone make, wanna make a motion to approve pending adding these topics that we discussed tonight?
I'll just, I think we should approve adding them.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a second.
Please come back.
We do have a second to approve. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 So moved, that is approved.
All right, moving over to the transportation element. This is a map of our, our road network. We have fourteen hundred miles of roads. The county owns two hundred and seventy-three miles, a hundred and eighty-eight of that miles is unpaved. The state owns eight hundred and sixty-two miles with twenty-seven point seventy-six miles of inter, or interstate. One hundred miles is in the Sumter National Forest roads, and they're owned by the USDA Forest Service, and the city owns fifteen point three miles. The South Carolina DOT road classifications, this is the map for that.
Katie, I don't know if this is the time to interject that or not, but at our last meeting, we talked about the roads that possibly in other counties are have controlled access, and I followed up with Ryan Ballantyne, he's with SC DOT in the district office, he's the traffic engineer, he works with traffic, but Newberry County does not have any controlled-access roads other than what is interstate, so US seventy-six is not gonna be a controlled access, so it's developable.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is our traffic counts. You can see by the key over, on the left-hand side, where our average daily traffic is. This is our commuting chart, so we have to the left the commuters that come into our county versus the commuters that commute out of our county into the other counties.
Kind of stunning how many people pass through our county on twenty-six, even, I retired in DOT, and I was responsible for twenty-six for a period of about three years, and I, I didn't even, I started looking at the traffic counts, people get on through the county, it's a lot of folks pass through the county.
Pass through.
Twenty-six is way below of above where I ever thought it would be.
The transportation planning, the COG is responsible for transportation planning in rural areas, including Newberry County. Two thousand forty-five long-range transportation, the twenty forty-five long-range transportation plan is a twenty-five-year plan, and includes two widening and twenty-six intersection projects in Newberry County. The twenty-twenty and the, through the twenty-twenty-seven rural development, transportation improvement plan is an eight-year plan, and it includes fourteen intersection, safety, interstate bridge, and trails projects in the county. Some additional funding is our C funds, that's an allocation for the county, is one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three, and can be used for paving, road improvements, street traffic signs, bridges, resurfacing sidewalks, and our drainage. And the gas tax is a ten-year plan, includes twenty-four projects in the county, including the I-twenty-six widening, the bridge, and paving projects, and improvements at road and rail intersections. I can't move forward. Our Comet is our regional transit, provides a route along the I-twenty-six corridor that connects the PTC in the downtown Newberry to the Ballantyne, Harbison, Chapin, and downtown Columbia. The Newberry Council on Aging provides on-demand transportation to three senior centers and a non-emergency medical appointments for all eligible county residents in need of their service.
There's not a Greyhound or bus stop in the county anymore.
Not that I'm, no.
That's what I didn't, somebody was mentioning that, but won't the, that, the Smart Ride or what we just talked, don't they deliver you to that, the hub down in Columbia?
Yes, they will.
Okay, that's what I thought, somebody...
But Smart Ride is now the Comet.
And when the Comet's supposed to...
Comet, the one he called the Comet, comes up here now, okay.
Wasn't the Comet supposed to re, re-alter their route or something, or?
I'm not sure if they're, I'm not sure if they're changing their route or not. Right now, the information we have is that it goes to the Piedmont Technical College in the downtown Newberry, and then it goes to Ballantyne, Harbison, Chapin, and the downtown Columbia areas.
Okay, I thought I heard that, I don't know.
We can check on that, though.
Well, I, when I was working in Columbia, it, it's pretty convenient, I might, I did it not every day, but if I needed to bring a state car on with me or vice versa, hopped on it at Track Supply, and they dropped me off at the next door, circle around the state capital area, and it was five dollars a day or something like that, and it was a pretty fair deal, you sleep...
Six dollars a day is all day pass.
Sitting there, you sleep an hour and sleep instead of driving all that, so it was, it really was not a bad arrangement. I, I guess it's still...
Eight-five dollars for that nap?
Yep, that's right. Well, eight-five dollars one way, five dollars, but it was like twenty dollars a week or something, you gonna do a week, but twenty dollars a week, five dollars if you did it a day or something.
Twenty-eight a week now.
Now, but, you know, that's...
Cheap about a week, cheap about a week then, right?
Fifteen years ago, but it was a pretty good setup for getting you downtown and...
Why don't you know, maybe I'm thinking of my laws to make up whatever's sake.
Okay.
So my apologies, guys.
We're, okay.
We still have seven.
Yeah, we still have a corps, so we're good. All right, some of our considerations. Does the existing road network adequately meet the current demand, and will it meet our future demand? What measures improvements are needed to meet current and future demand? Are there any of those already planned out or under development? Are transportation alternatives such as our sidewalks and trails for walking and biking, public transportation available, and is there adequate service? And what transportation enhancements are needed? Is it the bicycle and pedestrian facilities, parking, scenic, and landscaping programs, streetscaping, and/or historic preservation? So do we have any considerations or comments on our transportation element?
Just FYI, Katie, the enhancement programs that are done now through SC DOT, used to have a two-hundred thousand dollar limit, they have a four-hundred thousand dollar cap on them now. Two-hundred thousand of that goes toward engineering, development, planning, and the other two thousand, it goes toward the actual cost of the improvements. So that, I don't know if that's in here anywhere, but it might just be good information.
Projects are limited to a funding maximum of four hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's within DOT, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I had a, a question.
Page nineteen?
On page eight-fifteen, it's... On page 815, it says, RPO, et cetera, recommended transportation projects in Newberry. And it has two of them, one's 21 million, the other 16 million. And then all these other projects are listed, and I guess there's no money for them.
That's right, that's things that we, they would like to see, but there's no finances available right now for them.
Wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of projects. The other thing I was wondering about on page 825, it's the third paragraph, starts Newberry County's strategic location. It has kind of a general statement, says, "Newberry County's segment of Interstate 26 was used to transport between 10 and 25 million tons of freight." Do we need a more specific figure? That's, that's kind of a, kind of a massive spread, you know, if it were 20 to 25 or something. But 10 to 25, it'd be nice if we had a more specific number there.
We can try. Cheryl pulled that information there from the statewide freight plan in 2020, but we can see if we can get a little deeper in that. Any other comments, concerns, edits?
Only again, these are so well-written, I'm, I'm amazed.
Cheryl is wonderful. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the transportation element.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to adopt and approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second.
And this is just a reminder that these, all these elements will go to county council for the same approval and adoption.
We have a motion, and we have a second to approve. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved, motion approves.
So we've already worked on our objectives and our goals, and this is a sample of the community facilities implementation strategies that we talked about. And again, this is the contacts, that's Cheryl's contact if you need it, and then myself. And if you get back home and think of something, send me the edits, and I can get those to Cheryl. And that is all I have tonight.
Okay, do we have any updates on county council items?
The three that y'all heard last month will go to county council for first reading tomorrow evening.
Okay. Says here that our next regular meeting will be held May 16, 2023, at 5:30. That is our last item of business for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
I'll do that.
Do I have a second? All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved.